Good evening, everybody. I now call to order the Monday, October 14th, 2024 regular 6:00 PM school board meeting. If you would please stand for a moment of silence and in light of our recent storms, I'd ask that you please consider thinking of those who've been affected by the storms and our first responders that are helping those in need. Thank you. We will now present the colors. Presenting the colors for tonight's board meeting from the U.S. Army are J.R.O.T.C. at Matanzas High School, our Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Joseph Sherman, Cadet Staff Sergeant Andre Pelippenko, Cadet Sergeant Jesus Fernandez, and Cadet Corporal Elijah Seperset. They are led by Instructor First Sergeant Troy Caraballo.
Forward march. March on march. Colors hold. Left face. Present arms.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May they retire the colors.
Right face. Column left, march.
Thank y'all. Y'all may be seated. Okay, so before roll call, as you, for the benefit of those watching online, we did have to make a change of venue today, but it will be busy as usual. But we also have a lot to celebrate tonight, and there will come a point, a public comment, and I know many of you are here to give your well wishes to Dr. Conklin and Ms. Massaro as they leave their seat here soon. This is their last business meeting that they will be part of, and I welcome and encourage any of those well wishes and comments during our public comment session. So we will move on to roll call.
Jahani, is it working?
It's on.
Okay. Jahani Strong, Matanzas High School Board Representative. Cheryl Massaro, here.
Colin Conklin, present.
Wolfery, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay. And just to note, Ms. Chong is en route, and she will be joining us in just a bit. We will make note of that for the record when she arrives, okay? So now, we're going to move on to special announcements, and our first one is Family Engagement Month presented by Mr. John Finelli. Welcome, Mr. Finelli.
Good afternoon and good evening, Chairman Furry, School Board, Superintendent Moore. I have the great pleasure and honor tonight to present a resolution on family engagement. We all know how important it is to have that partnership with our families, and we've worked hard as a school district to make sure that we have timely communication with our families, opportunities to pair and partner with our families through all of the different events and activities. I know one was actually shared earlier today, an opportunity to share the love of reading with students between Belter Elementary and the families. They came in for a night where it was camping and smores and reading. So we want to continue to foster ways to increase family engagement and partner with our families to provide the best educational setting for our students as possible. So tonight, I'm here to read a resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing November 2024 as Family Engagement Month in Flagler County. Whereas, family involvement in a child's education from preschool through college is critical to student success and sets the foundation for preparing Florida's students to be lifelong learners and meaningful contributors to society; and whereas, creating an environment where learning takes place not just in a classroom but as a central part of family life requires that families play an active role in their children's education; and whereas, the role of families in creating a successful preschool-through-college education system for Florida's children is very important; and whereas, Flagler Schools' educational leaders have developed resources for all families to engage more fully in their child's education and to strengthen the partnerships within schools; and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the critical contributions made by families who foster a love for learning in their children and by educators who acknowledge the importance of family engagement and encourage making family engagement an integral part of the mission of all schools. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that November 2024 is Florida Family Engagement Month and encourages families and schools to create strong partnerships on behalf of the future of our students and their families across the state of Florida. Adopted by the School Board members of Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 14th day of October 2024, signed William Furry, Chair, and Superintendent LaShaka Moore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Finelli.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, so we will move on next to Spotlight, and we will start off with Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Today, I would like to spotlight Goal Three. We highlighted Goal Three today, which focuses on absenteeism for our students, really encouraging our families to ensure that their students are at school every day on time, as long as they are well and ready to learn, making sure that they are there at school on time. Our amazing instructors are prepared and ready to educate our students, but if they're not in school, they are missing those opportunities. Also, want to also bring recognition that we are going to be standing up a wellness center for Flagler County employees. Right now, it will be open to those who are on our health insurance, and more information will be coming on that as we continue to work forward with that in the next coming months.
Okay, thank you very much, Superintendent Moore. We will now move on to Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight. Ms. Teresa Rizzo.
Good evening, Board Members, Chairman Furry, and Superintendent Moore. Thank you again for allowing us the time to be able to share the things that are happening at the Education Foundation. This week, in partnership with Beaver Toyota, we will be thrilled to deliver 45 teacher grants this year. This will happen on Thursday, and you all are invited. There's a schedule posted on your calendar invite. We will be giving away over $70,000 to teachers for behavior and academic grants, and we're very excited about that this year. In addition, we're also excited to announce that we have a radio show on WNZF, and the name of the show is The Voices of Flagler's Future. We actually just recorded a couple hours ago with students from the Allied Health Program and Ms. Vicki White, and they absolutely astonished me. They were absolutely incredible. So please listen on Sunday mornings at 10:00 AM. You'll be able to hear that. It's also a podcast. You can get the link on our website as well as the radio's website. And this platform will just allow us to showcase our students and highlight the wonderful things that are happening in Flagler Schools. Finally, Superintendent Moore challenged the Ed Foundation this year with her Diploma Plus Initiative and our Classroom to Careers programs. So we are bringing career fairs to the middle schools this year in collaboration with the Junior Chamber of Commerce. On October 23rd, we will be having one at Buddy Taylor Middle School, and November 4th, we'll be having one at Indian Trails Middle School. So our local businesses, along with our programs of study from our high schools, will present and showcase career pathway opportunities to our middle school students. All of this is possible because of our community of donors who support education right here in Flagler County. So we thank you again for your time and your continued support.
Thank you very much for that. Lots of great things happening in there. And so tonight also, we are honored to be being recognized as Apple's Distinguished District, and we have some special guests here to present that. I have Mr. Chad Reynolds and Andy Kravitz from Apple Education. Please come on up.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
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 Members of the Board, Superintendent Moore. We're so excited to be here. We've worked with Flagler over 20 years now, and as you guys know, a lot of schools buy Apple products, a lot of schools use our technologies. What Flagler does with the technology, and more importantly, what teachers do with the technology to enable students, is really why we're here tonight, to once again recognize Flagler as a leader. When you start thinking about Apple Distinguished Schools, it's really those schools that are enabling students to demonstrate understanding in a way that they might not have been able to do without the technology otherwise. It's broken down into several different areas, and I think the Board is familiar with those and their accomplishments, but on a larger scale, to give you guys some context, there are only 1,000, slightly more, Apple Distinguished Schools in the United States. Now, that number pales in comparison to 130,000 K-12 schools in the United States. It's also in 39 countries, and then if you take a look at that number and spread it out, because it's a worldwide recognition, approximately 5 million-plus worldwide schools, there's only 1,000 that are distinguished with Apple. When we recognize those, they fall into these categories. So the schools within Flagler, over the last two years, submitted applications that demonstrated inspiration, imagination, and impact in what they're doing. And when they submitted those applications, they created videos, and they created a three-minute video, all of the schools in Flagler. Half of the schools were recognized last year, and this year, the remaining schools were recognized. So we put together a quick montage, and Teresa is right here beside me. They've done a fantastic job. We're not going to have you watch everybody's, but this kind of compilation of the applications that all the schools submitted was put together into a video. So previously, when schools applied, they ended up, depending on the time of the school year that it was, or the, like during COVID, we had to do narratives. So students submitted narratives, and schools submitted narratives. This year, it's focused on the videos, so in three minutes, they were able to tell their story. The team put together all of these, and I'm going to let Teresa kind of give you a little synopsis of what you're seeing on the screen.
So we took clips from all the different nine schools' videos and kind of put them together just to let you guys kind of take a peek inside of the schools to see. Like here, they're recording a science experiment using the iPad, and they can go back through and watch that again, kind of slow it down and see the drop, the small group collaboration with the students actually in the lead. You'll see here's some of the robotics at Quadsworth. They love speaking and listening to themselves read back again. Like, these are all things you don't really think of that you can use the technology for. The 3D printing, recording themselves in a green screen. It's a great tool for our teachers. They're able to, like, write and circulate the room and highlight while they're doing all of that, and kind of be not standing up against the board with your back to the board now, even like with math problems. It's fantastic to be able to show and teach that. We use them in all areas, in the music classroom. It's great. You know, they can play, record themselves, listen back to it again. This is our STAR Lab, the Traveling Planetarium that's ran by our MacBook that we take all around, and we kind of bring everybody in there and take them all out around. It works for all of our students. It gives them accessibility that they couldn't do before, like it allows them to give, to speak in front of the classroom where they wouldn't be able to before. The neat thing with all of our graduating kids now, for the past couple years, they've had it since kindergarten. Like, this is all that they've known. They're amazing when they come out, and this is, you know, recording a video cooking show right there, showing through the Mac. So those are just kind of little snippets of all the different videos that were put in to show you how it's being used in a classroom.
Awesome. Thanks, Teresa. So when you think of all the schools in Flagler being recognized as Apple Distinguished, there are only 17 worldwide districts that are recognized as Apple Distinguished Districts. Flagler is one of those 17 worldwide. So it would be appropriate for a round of applause. And again, it's a pleasure working with the team here at Flagler. The work that the teachers do on a day-to-day basis, the work that the students do, we're pleased to be a part of that and appreciate your time and partnership with us, and we look forward to many more years to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so we have a plaque in there.
Do you guys want to come around?
There we go. Very flexible.
There you go. One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Very cool. And so we have another great spotlight tonight. Old Kings School of Excellence.
Tonight, Board Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore, tonight we'd like to recognize Old Kings Elementary School. They're officially designated as a School of Excellence by the Florida State Board of Education. In Flagler County, only two schools have held this three-year distinction, Indian Trails Middle School and now Old Kings Elementary School. If you're not quite sure what it means to be a School of Excellence, their grade calculation is in the 80th percentile or higher for schools comprised of the same grade grouping, so elementary, middle, high in combination, for at least two of the last three school years. In 2023, 783 schools were designated as a School of Excellence. Of these schools, 658 maintained their designation from '21-'22, 37 renewed their designation, and 88 were newly designated in '22-'23. Old Kings was one of the schools newly designated at the close of the '23-'24 school year. Congratulations, proud Principal Jessica Fries and her outstanding advent.
I need the point five.
And if you did not recognize the back of their shirts, then letting the world know.
Very nice.
Don't hot, don't highlight.
Okay, what a great thing to celebrate there. Congratulations, Old Kings.
That's impressive. Yeah. It is.
That is. Okay, so we're going to move forward with the agenda here, and now we're at approval of minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Got a second. A motion from Ms. Massaro and a second from Ms. Chong. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Minutes have been approved. Now we will move on to adoption of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight, Superintendent Moore?
I do not have any.
Okay. So now, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we will move forward with this agenda. So we will now move on to public comment.
No one has signed up for public comment.
No one has signed up for public comment?
It has to be on agenda items.
Right. Okay. All right. So we have a very light, mostly consent here, so this will move relatively quickly. Just want to remind the public that we have workshop these items extensively beforehand so that we could move through these quickly on these consent votes tonight. So I will move on to first, finance consent, and I'd like a motion to approve 7.01 through 7.07.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Massaro, a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We now will move on to academic services. If I could have a motion to approve 9.01 through 9.04.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Operational services. I'd like a motion 10.01 through 10.03 for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, move forward. Human resource consent, 11.01 through 11.02. I'd like a motion to approve these consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Dr. Conklin, and so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, so that concludes our consent actions today, and...
17.01.
Seventeen, for some reason, that's not on my agenda here, for some reason. Thank you. Okay, seventeen, this is our action item here tonight. Now, this was a, we reviewed this in our workshop, and this was a letter of intent to purchase one of our properties. So the, I'd entertain a motion that we would not be interested in gauging this letter of intent.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Well, Chairman Furry, if I, I know you said it in the beginning of the meeting, but I just want to reiterate again that we spent a good bit of time during the workshop discussing all the agenda items, but particularly this one in the consensus was not to move forward and hold on to the property. I just want to make sure that everybody understands all of these items have been really fully discussed and vetted.
Thank you for making that clarification. Okay, we will move forward. That conducts our consent and action items, and now we move forward to public comment.
We have Jennifer Sorrentino, and her talk is Matanzas Football.
Welcome, Ms. Sorrentino.
How are you? I'm here because my son is a football player at Matanzas High School. First, I would like to say I'm very proud to be a part of Matanzas High School and their football organization. The players and parents have worked very hard this year to raise over $35,000. I want to point out that before I came to this meeting, I did speak and email all the appropriate people at the high school, including the principal, the deans, and the coaches. I was told that this is the place I need to be when addressing certain issues. My son has been in tackle football for over four years now. He works very hard and has big dreams of being in the NFL. As a parent, it is my job to support him and advocate for him, and at this point, I'm here to advocate for the entire Matanzas football team. You can only imagine my astonishment when my son came home his first year in high school to tell me he was thinking of quitting the team, a team that him and all of the players are working very hard to be a part of. He then told me how his best friend's phone and wallet were stolen right out of the room all the football players keep their things. Then I came to find out that his brand-new Nike pants, Fab athletic shorts, and new sweatshirt, Nike sweatshirt, were stolen. Helmets and pads are getting moved around, causing players to get fitted again and scrambled to find new ones before their games. In my opinion, this is absolutely unacceptable. Why should I have, as a parent who works very hard to get their kids everything they need and want, have to see these boys so upset and have to worry every time they go to practice if their things will be there when they get back to the locker room? Why should the football players have to worry about their stuff being gone when they're out doing what they love to do? Is this fair? Absolutely not. Then I see all over Facebook that the high school, the Matanzas High School, has got a new front office furniture, but we don't have the proper facilities for our football team. To me, that was a bit of a slap in the face. I also found out during my exploration that FPC football team has a locker room with lockers, and they also have a meeting room. Why can't our boys have the equitable facilities needed? And what kind of examples does that separate them, for them? Are they not worthy of this? The Matanzas football program is growing and growing. I would just like to know who's in charge of making these decisions, and can there be a plan moving forward? Is it possible to get one started for our boys at Matanzas High School? Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Superintendent Morris, can you look at some of those things that are in the...
Probably.
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker.
No one else signed up for public comment.
Would anybody else like to come forward to make any comments or celebration for...
Come on, Andy, I knew you were welcome.
All right, I'll start. Only spent twelve years on the dais with you, so just, I feel it, I was, saw the post today that this was your last business meeting, and I think it's appropriate for me to at least reflect back on our twelve years, and so it's, I think the most important thing I look back is, right, the camaraderie that we had on the board, whether it was Sue, Evy, starting with Sue and Evy, all the way through Mr. Fisher, Peter Palmer, and then Trevor at the end. So it's, you know, we accomplished a lot, you know, we had our agreements and disagreements, but we always left with respect for one another, and could laugh about it in the end. And just one again, I think the work that you've done for twenty-four years, the community respects that, and it's shown, I think, in the people that are here today and the comments that I've read online. So we appreciate you and the time you've put into improving Fidger schools and looking out for your children and staff, so, thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, next, would anyone else like to come up and say some words?
There you go.
Welcome.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of all the parents for what you've done for all our students, even through disagreements. I just wanted to know, we all love you, and we always knew that your heart was always in the right place. It was always upon students, so I just want to say thank you. I'm gonna miss you for sure.
Thank you.
Good to get that.
There you go. Look at him.
Don't cry. Hi, guys, I'm Rachel Rogers, used to be Sheffield, but I'm confused. Well, everybody's called me Sheffield tonight. I can't, don't cry. I have been here since day one of her twenty-four years of leadership and dedication, and I cannot say what a phenomenal job you've done, the impacts you've made, not just on the kids' lives, but as parents. I can flip those years around and say I've been with you for forty-three years. Not too many people can say that, but I can tell you from the bottom of my heart that this county will miss you, fighting for them, your passion, your tenacity, and your integrity, and don't ever lose that. I love you, Mama. Thank you.
What she said.
All right, is there anyone else would like to come forward and speak at this time?
So Lauren, Ramire, so both of you, I wish you the best of luck, and so Colleen, you probably don't remember, but my youngest, when they were like infant car seats, you met me, and I was a hot mess, and you were so nice to me, I didn't even know what your role was, and then I heard all the wonderful things that you have done, and I was like, wow, she's amazing, and it's crazy...
I'm a hot mess, too.
It's crazy to see how things turn, so I appreciate you for not judging me that day you met me, and thank you. And Cheryl, I appreciate meeting you and you believing in me, not even knowing me, and just the vision I have, so thank you for trusting me, and I know I have some big shoes to fill, so I appreciate you both for everything you've done to fight for our kids, because it's always been that, and, you know, you have done a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
All right, would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing no one else approach, I'm gonna close public comment, and then we will move on to board member requests. Are there any board member requests at this time?
I don't have any.
Okay. I'm sorry, no, okay, very good.
No.
Okay. And I just, I just need to quickly address something in this category here in regards to the cost of the attorney. There was a mention that our additional costs for the current structure of the direction that we've gone with the attorney structure of outsourcing have been $300,000 additionally, but in fact, it's only been $37,312.60. So just wanted to clarify that number because it was a significant difference between those two numbers, so...
Well, if you're gonna bring that up, we'll have something to say.
To, this is just a clarification of...
Well, you're not, I'm looking at the big picture, which means we just paid for, we're gonna be paying for a contract for Neola, which is quite extensive, which we didn't have before either, and that adds to the cost.
Well, that would, that could, would exist either way, because if we were going that direction, that had nothing to do with our attorney structure, that choice of going that direction. So it's just a clarification, because it's important, because it is a stark contrast to what was mentioned earlier, so we just need to set the record straight.
No, it's how you look at the cost, sir.
Okay.
So we can, we can agree to disagree.
I just had the...
It's the total cost.
These numbers are, I'm just giving the numbers from our CFO and just making sure that the public's aware that's the numbers that we've received from our finance department.
And we still have not hired a school district representative, which will be another payment that's gonna have to be made, plus benefits, which is gonna be extensive, because they're not gonna come at $135,000 a year, okay? So you add that in there, you add Neola, yes, and then you take your $35,000 that we've had for just this year, why do we even need to pay that? If you have an attorney, we've had seventeen years of an attorney prior to that, even when we first had a school board attorney. It was one person representing nine schools, nine schools, so...
But as we grow, our models can change, and the, just for clarification, the former attorney's salary and benefits were factored into this equation as well, so it is not as stark of a contrast. And mind you, once the district would hire their internal district attorney, some of the outsourcing costs that we had potentially would not have to be, because they would exorb that, and it would be factored into their salary and benefits there. So it's only for clarification, that's all this was for, nothing more, so we'll move on from here. So now we'll go to closing comments.
Good evening, fellow board members of the 2024-2025 school year. I'm here tonight to represent Matanzas High School on my behalf, and thank you all for your company. In recent news, the Flagler Schools Plant Services Department was thoroughly checked our campus, and it is thankfully undamaged by the storm. Our administration has strongly advocated, if any MHS families affected by the storm need assistance, do not hesitate to reach out for help. Our football team assisted our community by scooping and carrying sandbags to help others prepare for Hurricane Milton. Matanzas National Honor Society helped out at the Pink On Parade 5K sponsored by Advent Health, as well as took part in Palm Coast's intracoastal waterway cleanup. At this event, our students picked up 152 pounds of trash from along the walkway and water's edge. Our Matanzas culinary team competed in a regional workshop. Students took first place in their epic menu design and third place in the Battle of the Bowl cooking competition. As Hispanic Heritage Month comes to a close, Mr. Andres Yebes, an employee from the Technology Department, gave an inspiring talk about his background and career path. This presentation connected the technology unit with our Pirates. Our volleyball teams came together from both high schools for their senior night this year as we sent them off to districts. We want to take this time to thank you, Mrs. Holly from our front desk, who worked closely with Dunkin' Donuts to provide our students with gift cards for our PBIS team. Two students were recently recognized on their recent recognition as a commended student in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to Caleb D. and Joseph S. In other news, a variety of winter sports are coming up for our student athletes this season, as well as on Wednesday, October 16th, several local educational organizations, businesses, and career resources will be on-site to speak with students about career opportunities. Next Wednesday, UCF alumni will be performing a professional-level Shakespeare play for our 10th-grade students, a piece they will read about later on in the school year. Next Friday, 40 visual arts students get to attend a DSC art exhibition and attend a regional arts seminar. Finally, our potato bowl is coming up, in which we want to wish our Pirates good luck. This concludes my closing comments for tonight on behalf of Matanzas High School. Thank you, and have a great rest of your night.
Thanks. You're welcome. Okay, first of all, I really would like to thank our staff for setting up our shelters and maintaining them, and the time and the effort that they had put into that away from their families and the things that they have to take care of, because that's just phenomenal. And if you heard our three o'clock meeting at all, our superintendent said we have a, was it five?
Five stars.
Five star shelters. Five star shelter. I mean, that, myself...
Waiting for the reviews on Yelp.
Yes, so keep that in mind.
I have testimonials.
Yes, I believe, I believe it. I believe it. So, I mean, that just goes to show that they really care about Flagler County. Doesn't matter where you're from, what your background is, what pets you have, they had a parrot there, from what I understand, plus dogs and cats, but they took care of people, and that's what we do. We take care of each other. That's important. All right. I also would like to compliment our facilities people and the engineering of the FPC parking lot, because this is the first storm in twenty years, there was no water in it after hurricane. After the hurricane, there was no water in it. That is phenomenal, for those of you that understand that. Because I had lived that for many years, and you could not get in without going through four-foot water, and that was minor storms, so I couldn't even imagine what it would've been like. So you did a good job. It worked. It worked. So that, to the physical plant people, they made it work right. I also want to take this opportunity, Johani and Danny will be heading up our virtual teen town halls this year. They will be starting on October 24th, a little different this year, and I'll explain why. What it is, the first one is October 24th, and it's financial planning. Then we're gonna have one on November 21st, career pathways. Thursday, January 23rd, it's gonna be student safety, and Thursday, taking care of yourself in and out of school is on March 27th. They're all seven o'clock, they're for middle school and senior high school kids. It's virtual, so they can be at home or wherever they are, but what's unique about this is, this year, the two student liaisons came up with all of the topics. So we're just, the little team that we have is facilitating them, getting the right people. They conduct the entire hour event, so it goes from seven to eight o'clock, and these are the topics they felt that were most important to them. So they'll be out there, it'll be posted on Facebook again, and if you want to get your, if you know anybody would like to get advantage of this, all you have to do is have them talk to the student liaisons at their schools, or email myself, and we'll get them signed up.
And then, also to elaborate on this, our students are granted five hours of community service, which for a lot of them, you need at least 100 hours of community service to qualify for bright futures. So this is a really great advantage and opportunity to take advantage of, so I really recommend this.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, let's see. The other thing, the last thing I want to say is that this is my last voting meeting, and it's, there are things I'm definitely gonna miss, people I'm definitely gonna miss, and then there's others I'm not. And I think you all understand that, and it's like, it's a very mixed bag. You, Dr. Conklin, I feel like I'm invading in her retirement of 24 years. Dr. Conklin hired me. How's that make you feel?
It makes me feel old, Cheryl.
Yeah, it should, it should, but her and Bill Del Bru both hired me for, to work here, which I've been involved in district almost 20 years, okay, four years as a school board member, who'd have thought? Not me, to be honest with you. So that was quite interesting, but it's been a good partnership, especially knowing that I had the thrill to work with some of the best, if not the best, school board member ever here at Flagler County. There's some good ones, but she's probably the best. And I've also had the opportunity to work with some of the worst school board members ever, and I'm not gonna name names, but I think people know what I'm talking about. So, you know, it's gonna be, as I said, there are times I'm really happy, but I'm sure there are things I'm going to miss, but I'm not gonna be far. I'm not gonna be far. So I will probably be sitting out there with everybody here often, and I will be using that podium probably more than most, because then I have the freedom of speech. Because when you're a school board member, you don't quite get that, you have to maintain a lot of strict behavior, and I will do that, but it's a little different when you're at the... the podium and you have freedom of speech. So I will be there to advocate for our students and our staff, as I think I always have my four years serving. So I thank you all for the opportunity and privilege to be involved and to serve because that's what it's all about. And I really wish our new school board members well. They stepped out of their comfort box to run, they stepped out of their comfort box to make this happen, and I'm sure they're going to bring a good feeling to the school board. So I wish them well. It's all you.
So a little bit of business first, I want to remind, all of you should have gotten an envelope and an invitation to FPC's Hall of Fame induction. They are having a ceremony November 1st at the football stadium, I believe it's during the Potato Bowl. Yep. Where they'll be inducting into a Hall of Fame alumni, past alumni. So I hope the community can come out and enjoy that event as well. I think it's going to be really neat and the Potato Bowl is always a blast. I thought this would be our very last meeting. It's definitely our last business meeting, but I was claiming this as my last meeting until LaShaka informed us this afternoon that we have to come to the meeting in November.
We kept telling you this before today, okay?
I was in denial, I was in denial. So we'll see everybody on the 12th, but I appreciate that. I had to write my comments out and I'm going to read them. And normally I don't read my comments and I just speak, but I can't tonight. So I'm going to try to just kind of share some thoughts. So I'm just going to read and I'm going to try to keep it together. I just want to say thank you. As I sit here for the last time in this seat, I'm filled with deep sense of gratitude and pride. For the past 24 years, it's been an incredible honor and a privilege to serve the students and the families and the teachers and the staff and the administrators of Flagler County. This community is truly something special and I am forever thankful for the opportunity that I've had to be a part of it. To watch, to the students, both past and present, you've always been at the heart of my work. Watching you grow and succeed and overcome challenges and hearing about some of the stories that our students live with every single day. Overcoming those challenges and watching them succeed has probably been the most rewarding part of this journey and it is the best part of being a school board member. You are the reason that we come together and your future is what drives every one of us sitting up here. Never forget how important you are or how much potential you really hold and how many people are rooting for your success. To our teachers and staff, thank you. Your dedication and your passion for our students are unmatched. You're the foundation of the schools and the impact you have goes well beyond any curriculum or classroom. You teach not just subjects, but compassion and resilience and the joy of learning. You all have been the unsung heroes of our community and it's been my greatest honor to support and try to be a voice and advocate for you. To our administrators, thank you for your unwavering leadership, especially during very challenging times. Your guidance and your vision have shaped the path forward for our schools. I've always believed that this is a partnership, a team, and when the partnership or the team is dis- fragmented, it makes a difference and it impacts everyone else around us. I'm confident that you'll continue to steer our district with integrity and deep commitment for our students' well-being and success. And I know that Flagler will continue to move forward under the leadership of LaShaka Moore and her team. To the community members, parents, and stakeholders, thank you for your trust and your partnership. Thanks for always holding me accountable and keeping it real. Public education is a community effort. We've all accomplished so much when we work together. You've shown me time and time again that when we put our differences aside, focus on the bigger picture and what really matters, and we work together, we can really build a brighter future for just about any of our students. As I step away from this role, I offer a few words of advice to the new board members. Remember that this role is not about personal agendas or politics, it's about the students and the future that we're building for them. Listen to each other. I haven't always been great at that. It's been a work in progress for me. Listen to each other, even when you disagree. Andy, I appreciate you pointing out the differences because we still laugh and have a good time.
She'll listen to me more.
Yeah. You know what? Probably. But remember that every decision you make touches the lives of thousands of children, teachers, and family, and your legacy will be defined by how well you serve them. I've said this before and I'll say it again, public education is the cornerstone of our democracy. It is the bedrock upon which we build our future. It ensures that every child, regardless of their background circumstances, has a chance to learn and grow and succeed. The work we do in this room, the decisions we make and the policies we set shape the trajectory of countless lives. Protecting and advocating for public education is not just our duty as school board members, it's a moral responsibility that we owe the next generation. So again, I just want to say thank you all for the support, the trust, the countless memories. The first thing I wrote, I wrote about all these, I went down memory lane, there was no way I was getting through that. But I leave with a very full heart. It's definitely bittersweet, but knowing that our district is in good hands and that the work we've done together has made a difference, it's been the greatest honor of my life to serve you and the community and I'll always be a proud supporter of Flagler Schools. So thank you. And I'm not going anywhere, I'm here. Just pick up the phone. But that's it, thank you.
Dr. Conklin, I just want to say thank you. These last two years have flown by and I just appreciate the fact that when I was first elected, you reached out to me and we had a chance to sit down and we've been able to respectfully disagree on things, but I feel like we've worked together very well. And beyond the major things, I've also been able to learn from you and I appreciate that you take from your 24 years of experience and to learn to ask questions and just look at everything and I appreciate that. And I know people don't know, but when we have things that, you know, that I've had difficulty with, I do reach out to former board members, everybody from Jill to Janet to Trevor Tucker and I hope, and I can also reach out to you. And beyond that, too, I hope you'll call me a friend.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, I hope everybody's getting back to normal after this storm. I left my house in the dark today, but I can finally say that we have power and water again. I've never been so happy to go home and do laundry. Can't wait. And thank you to our staff also for serving the community. Yeah, I have no doubts that everybody did a great job and offered great service to the community. And yeah, Flagler just, they really showed up for Florida, so thank you.
So just to start, I want to first to start off again and thank the staff and faculty for the amazing work they did. And Superintendent Moore, I was there when they opened the doors and they greeted in the first people in need and they did an amazing job of getting that done in short order. So I'm really grateful for all the tireless effort that they put in. Also, before I move on to other things, we have two young ladies here that I just wanted to recognize from Scout Troop 4281, Ms. Bella Gregory and Abby Sims. So when we had a quick change of venue, I had said to staff, we need to get somebody down there to direct people up here and let them know we have changed venues. And these two ladies came straight up, says, we are scouts and we are here to serve. We will go down and hold that sign for you. So I just wanted to thank them for their service to their community today. Thank you very much. If you're getting a badge for this or something you earned as far as I'm concerned.
Fast.
So great. And just, we had so much to celebrate tonight and again, you know, we want to celebrate Dr. Conklin and Ms. Masaro for their dedication to education on and off the dais. And, you know, it's been quite a journey, the first two years of my term here, and we have had times where we agree and times we disagree, right? But you know, it's through that debate and through that conversation and through those things that we grow as elected officials, right, as leaders. And without that honesty and collaboration of where we all stand, we can't get anywhere, right? And so I do appreciate that both of you have always brought your passion and you've brought where you stand on the issues, right? And I know that I have grown as a board member because of those engagements. And I know that although you are stepping down from your elected role, I know that you guys will still be involved in education for as long as you want to be, right? And I'm sure that'll be a while. But so, and I just want to thank you for serving in that role because it is a challenging thing to do, to be in public service. And sometimes it's thankless and there are some things that are great about it, too. But again, it's about serving, it's not about what we get out of it, it's what we give back to the community and both of you have done just that. And, you know, and again, just going back, regardless of however we come out of votes, the joy is, at the end of the year, we all gather at the Ocean Center and send these kids off, and I've enjoyed doing that with both of you. And I wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, I'll just say, you know, listening to our student board members, seeing our students in the back that are always willing to jump in, I may be a little bit biased, but I believe that we have the best students in Flagler County. They are absolutely amazing. And, you know, I often am contacted when a student isn't making the best choice and maybe it gets out on video or something and people ask me about it and I always say, they're kids, right? They're going to learn, they're going to grow and they're going to do better. And I'm not ever surprised when students and kids are kids. And so we have the best here in Flagler County, so thank you so much. Thank you for being the willing to hold that sign up. We appreciate it so very much. Our district calendar has made some adjustments, so we went over that today at our one o'clock board meeting. Thank you so much for our faculty and staff for making adjustments and our families for making this a student day instead of a teacher work day. We know how important those teacher workdays are, but it's also very important that we preserve our instructional time with our students. So be on the lookout for more information about the updates to our district calendar for this school year. I also want to thank our team for all of their hard work and dedication as we work through Hurricane Milton, as well as all of our different partners, you know, the county, the sheriff, volunteer services, Department of Health, so many teams, all of our cities, we all come together and we do our very best to make decisions that is going to be good for our community and then to provide them a safe place that they can come. And I don't know if you've ever had to put up, set up cots and take them down and, you know, our county guys right before the storm, they're there, they're cleaning them and getting them all prepared, but it really is a community effort. And so if there's ever an opportunity for you to be a part of volunteer services and volunteer at a shelter, you want to take up that opportunity to come and be a part of it. I said to someone, I said to the gentleman from Apple, I said, listen, if you're ever in a hurricane, you want to hope that you're in Flagler County. Because we do facilitate a five-star shelter service here within Flagler County and I'm pretty sure somebody's saying, stop saying that. But it is, we really true, all, every, all of our different community organizations that come together for this, they really do go in with a mindset to serve. And it is about serving our community and serving our community well, and we do that. I said to our team, I said, listen, make sure you pack your patience, you come in with a smile. And when, you know, we start off, I said, did you pack your patience? If not, go back out and come back in because we're going to serve our community, we're going to serve our community well.
Senator, before you go on to something new, I know we talked a little bit about it today at the workshop, but could you share again how many folks we served at the shelter?
We had just under 200 folks at the shelter that was special needs, as well as our general population and animals. We did all of that at Rimfire Elementary School, five-star service that is, but providing the meals, the Department of Health providing health care for those that are in need, the Humane Society providing support for our pets because the pets are in a separate area and someone has to be there to be with the pets, and so the Humane Society does that and it's really, it's really cool to see. I can't, Dawn, tell me the animals again, how many?
Cats, 12 dogs, one parakeet. It says the parakeet's name was Faith.
The parakeet's name was definitely Faith. But there are families that come to the shelter and so making sure we provide, in our sheriff's office, I mean, just our deputies are there, it's just, it's, nobody necessarily wants to be at a shelter, but I can say if I had to be there, I would want to be there with the people who are working the shelters in Flagler County because they really do send the best of the best to work and on behalf of our community.
And all of them have their own homes to worry about and take care of and they're there.
And you have to set it up and you got to tear it down. And so on Friday, we had the county that was there, we had the sheriff's office, they're there helping to support our people, just all of it. It's a community effort and it's an honor to be a part of it. It's an excited day. Congratulations about the Apple Distinguished District, that's such great news. All of our schools, Apple Schools, Old Kings, being a school of excellence, so much hard work. I can, I'm going to send Ms. Critcher a message and tell her congratulations as well. We miss her and all of the hard work she put into helping get Old Kings Elementary there. And I know we've said a lot of great things tonight for Ms. Masero and Dr. Conklin, but I invite all of you back on November 12th where we will officially celebrate them as members of this board and just say thank you for taking a chance on me as a newbie coming in. It's been such an honor to work alongside you. So I invite everybody to come out, November 12th, 3:00 PM, and afterwards, we're going to have a celebration.
All right, looking forward to it.
I love a good party.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.